To school committees meeting of April 26, 2021, and I will call this to order. At 6:04 PM. So our agenda items this evening will be the following. We will have public comment followed by our student representatives, followed by reports and discussion items. Beginning with the COVID-19 update and including discussion around a report and discussion around pooled testing from the Board of Health. And then grade six through 12 return. We'll move into the FY22 budget update and fees for 2021, 22, including preschool tuition, transportation fees and athletic fees. And then we will move into our action items, which include a vote to approve the MOAs for units B, C, and D. A vote to authorize the superintendent's implementation of return to school plan for grades six through 12. An approval of a gift, a vote to approve the regular student transportation contract for FY22 to FY24. A vote to approve the athletic transportation FY22 and approval of minutes. Then we will have a chair report superintendent report future agenda items, next meeting dates and adjournment. So with that, we will move on into public comment. And I will just say that public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes and is not a discussion, a debate. Or a dialogue between individuals and the committee. It's a commit citizens opportunity to express his or her issues, opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. And any individual who's wish who wishes to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. All citizens shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. So, and I will ask Ms. Bergstrom for help on this.
Yep.
But perhaps one, two. Just one second. One little thing here. Okay. So, so. With that, in order to give everyone an equal chance, I will lower all the digital hands for everybody. And then you may raise your digital hand if you wish to speak up. So Ms. Bergstrom, perhaps you can help lower all the digital hands and let me just go over here and look.
We do not currently appear to have anyone available for public comment.
And that is what I am noting as well. So seeing none, we will continue on with the schedule. And we will hear from our Winchester High School representatives, Alvin Edler and Caroline Andrews. So thank you very much for joining us this evening and for giving us a perspective on what's happening as we move forward. This is a momentous, momentous week for the high school.
Hi, Caroline couldn't make it tonight. She had a change in her practice schedule. But she did tell me some things that she had heard too, so I should be able to cover on the size of our update. First off, just starting smaller, we have the high school, the sports seasons are ending for the fall two season and now we're starting spring and the final season. Um, the connection commit and the purple club are holding an epilepsy awareness walk this weekend. And speaking of a lot of the clubs and organizations at the high school are now starting to go through their process of transitioning through leadership. So whether that be officer elections, new members, stuff like that. There will also be some standardized tests happening at and around the school. I know that AP exams are happening throughout the month of May, kind of sporadically they're spread out based on the college board's schedule. And I haven't heard from MCAS because it doesn't, um, the seniors don't take MCAS, but I believe MCAS is happening in May too. And I know you guys were very close to that, so. I know you were also the languages are able to hold their seal of by literacy exam, which is a exam that seniors can take. And if you do well in it, you get a sort of badge in your diploma marking you as bi literate in whatever language you're studying. And then of course, the big topic this week is that everyone is returning back to school. Um, I know that the, so the upperclassmen at the high school have not been in the building yet. They will go in tomorrow for their, for the first day, the only the freshmen and sophomores have been in Monday and Tuesday. I was actually lucky. I was able to go in as a pal, so to show freshmen, sophomores around the high school, help them find their classes that they need. So I was there today. It was seemed really positive. I think a lot of people were very happy to be back in the school. Especially I think those two days of just freshmen and sophomores were really nice to get them back on their feet. It's the first day they've been in that, in that school with their other half of their grade all year. So I think that was, I think some people, reactions vary. Some people were really excited to get to see all their friends. Some people were a bit nervous just to have that many people in the classroom, that many people in the halls. So I think those two days of transition were helpful, especially for those underclassmen. And then overall, everyone's been really excited. The teachers have all been super excited to get the kids back in the classroom. And the kids have liked being back in and about the school. Um, there's also been, so for example, like the lunch policy is open campus. So today I experienced like pretty much every student was outside. There were a few kids in the cafeteria, but in no means any increase from what you would see in the past few months. So I was impressed by that, that there was not, it didn't seem overcrowded. And of course, that's because it was half the school, but it still feel, it's felt like it was a very manageable amount of people in the school and the hallways. And everyone still seemed to be following all the protocols that have been in the play in place since the beginning of the year. As far as I can see, Caroline also said that she talked to some elementary school families and she said that they were all very excited to get their kids back in. I think elementary schoolers might be even more excited to just have more time with all their friends in school than all those high schoolers are. And she said that she was hearing positive stuff from the middle school too. So I think some of these transitions might be a bit challenging, especially for kids who have been full remote and are now coming into the school. I know there are a few cases of that, but overall, I think everyone in the building is just really excited to have all those people back.
Great. Thank you so much for the update. So especially it was exciting to hear about the, about the, about everything with the high school students and then also hearing a little bit of the perspective about what's going on with the elementary and middle school students. So I appreciate your and Caroline's reaching out to them. So with that, I'll open it up to members if you have any questions and I see that Mr. Nixon has a question. Mr. Nixon.
Sorry, there we go. It's on mute. Evan, I don't expect you to know all the details, but tell us, how's the Zen Garden?
That's a great question. Um, I can only answer from my perspective of what I've seen. It seems like the Zen Garden has been physically the same since the beginning of the year, which in the back of the high school, there's a path going from, I guess, if you look at the high school as a U, there's a pathway from the middle towards like Swanton Street in that direction. And there are two circular cutouts. One has a solid ground. There's some rocks around it. And there is, I think, what's supposed to be a fountain that isn't running yet. And then there's a second one that is still a dug up hole in the middle with no filling in there. So I have no idea what the timeline would be like of that, but right now it seems like it's partially built and then hasn't progressed much since the beginning of the year, I would say.
And do you know for, for what has been constructed? Is that open and available to students? Or does Mr. Mahoney sort of discourage use until we wrap up the whole project?
I haven't heard any specific direction either way, but I have seen it. They're just kids sitting on the rocks around that little circle. It seems to be harmless and I haven't heard any teachers discouraging kids from going there. People just walk around the park that's not filled in yet.
Okay, thank you. And then just with respect to elementary and it's really a comment and it's as much for, for Evan and Caroline as it is for Dr. Evans. But talking about elementary students and how enthusiastic enthusiastic they are to be coming back. You know, I know something our high school students really look forward to every spring is that awful near graduation or seniors I'm talking about. Is those elementary revisit days to get to go back and say both hi and goodbye. And I know it means a lot to the teachers at the elementary schools and how much our elementary students sort of thrill at seeing these giant people come into elementary schools and imagine that that will be them someday. So I'm, I hope that there is a way as we get towards graduation to still permit that to happen. And Dr. Evans didn't know I was going to bring this up, but that is just one example of many of the meaningful things in our community. If there's any way we can make it happen, I think it would just be terrific.
I think I know that that totally depends on the policies too, but I think that definitely is something that seniors really appreciate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Evan. Thanks so much for the update. I'm pretty excited to hear a little more about the open campus for lunch and just what your thoughts are on that. My understanding is it's expanded now and you know what, as someone who's gone through Winchester High School. And now what would your perspective be on having it expanded?
Um, I think it's really valuable this year, specifically in the situation of COVID of just getting those people out the building. I think that has been really helpful. I also think it's a step that a lot of underclassmen were excited about, of course, of the possibility of going off campus. I know like a bunch of sophomores who started going to stop and shop for lunch because it was exciting that they can leave campus and go get food. And I do think it's a bit, I think it's a good move just because of also the responsibility aspect of it. I know it's a safety thing, of course, to keep the younger kids in the building. But I do think the, what I've seen from them so far is the responsibility of going, getting stuff going anywhere and then coming back to his class on time. Leaving, coming in the right doors and stuff has been, I think it's a small change because obviously I think every student in the high school is capable of that. I just think that it's a good, it's more realistic and it's more real life for them to be able to come and go this year. So even if that changes due to safety in other years, I think it's definitely a positive.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any other members? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Evan. I really appreciate your input. And as always, if you would like to stay, you are most certainly welcome to stay. But if you have other things and work to do, then we totally understand as well. So and we appreciate your insights as always.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Thank you. So we will now move into the reports and discussion items, beginning with the COVID-19 update from Dr. Evans. And we have also welcomed from the Board of Health and from the Department of Public Health. Well, from the Board of Health, the executive director, Jen Murphy and Winchester High School head nurse, Jen Markham. And then also Jess, Jessica Pfefferman, who is the program manager for the Winchester High School COVID testing team.
Sure, if I could, I'd like to just say a few words about this amazing team. These three women who've come to present tonight and, and just acknowledge the incredible efforts they've made to get us to the point where we can be fully reopened pre K to 12 tomorrow for all students who choose in-person learning. First, I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of Jen Markham, the lead nurse for the district, who has been quietly hard at work behind the scenes crafting many of the documents that I've sent out to the district, including most recently this weekend. As we have had a new guidance from the state, she works closely with a public Winchester Public Health, especially Jen Murphy. And the Public Health Nurse to be sure that our nurses and administrators are supporting contact tracing and appropriate mitigation measures. And the, without their heroic efforts, we would not be open this week. I can tell you that it's just been incredible amount of work, care, thoughtfulness, research, conversation. The other person that I've spoken about at past school committee meetings is Jessica Pfefferman. Jessica is a Winchester resident with a background in public health and was on the Board of Health for nine years. And she's worked for the last several years to support the Health Department. Some of those very well-developed short messages that we send out this year are, I think, her work. And since March 2020, she's supported COVID efforts for the town and public health and also has been the program manager for pool testing. So what I have been communicating with the wider community, kind of just in time information regarding particularly contact tracing when students who are at three feet, what the implications are of that. I would like to offer a chance for Jen Murphy and Jen Markham to talk about that first because the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has made some rulings around contact tracing that we're kind of wrestling with. And we wanted to have some conversations with you about those. And then we can go into the pool testing piece with Jessica Pfefferman. And she has a slideshow that she can share about that. So I don't know if Jen Markham or Jen Murphy, either of you would like to kick this piece off?
Sure. I mean, I have some slides. I didn't know necessarily what you're looking for tonight. I figured just an overview of where we are now with COVID might be helpful. So if I could share my screen, I could do that. I do have a slide on the new DUCI protocol that you mentioned, Judy. Judy, so.
Okay. Great.
So.
Great. Um, this is information, these first few slides is just information that we have currently on our dashboard. And anyone can go at any point and look and see where we are. We update this, excuse me, weekly. Every Monday we update our, our total cases that we have. And I apologize to anyone who watched the select board meeting yesterday. Some of these slides are repetitive. But I did add for you the, the latest that we published on Monday, the latest cases in the school system. And again, this is for anyone attending in-person staff and as well as students. And so right now we currently have three active cases, which is a very low number. And I think we can all agree, as we have all along, that we have had a very successful school year, given the challenges that we've, we've faced. So as of right now, we have three cases. We did have only two new cases from last week to this week. So, so this is very good news. Overall, we've had 276 cases within the school system since school started, in-person school started. And this is just an overview of our month by month data that we have been collecting on confirmed cases. As you can see, we did after the, the holiday period through December, January started to decrease severely, which was nice. To see that the disease rate had, had decreased drastically. And you can see, this just shows you the trend line over time. And what's nice to see is that the school cases do mimic the community in the sense that, you know, you can tell that this is driven outward in. And as we've said from the outset, and this trend line sort of shows that. So the school cases do mimic what we see in the community in terms of the highs and lows there. In terms of, of our positivity rate, this is actually the first time we've published a chart like this where we've been slightly above the state average in terms of our positivity rate. So if we can get that lower, that would be good. That started to creep up over the past few weeks, albeit very slowly, but it's going in the wrong direction. So we would absolutely like to see that go, go down a bit. And how we do that is to increase or keep up our testing. And that may be an indefinite part of how we do business and how we live our lives. And so I encourage people, even vaccinated people who engage in traveling or other, other activities to where there are a lot of people that they continue to test. And this just shows the trend, whoops, sorry, this just shows the trend line over time of our positivity rate. And as you can see, we are still in fact on an upward trend, again, not the direction we want to be going in. But certainly we're nowhere near where we were back in December, January. So this is good and I hope to never get back to that level again. And I'm sure our vaccination efforts will keep us relatively low. And this is just a chart for the age distribution breakout of our cases. And you can see that we've had the most cases in the zero to 19 year age range. That does cover 19 years as opposed to the other age brackets with only cover nine years. But you can see how the cases have been distributed across, across our age range of our residents. And the blue line does show you the number of residents that we have within each age range. So it's just nice to see for comparison and the orange line is our confirmed cases. This just gives you a breakout of those who have presented with symptoms out of all of our cases since March of 2020. 65% of our confirmed cases did report having symptoms and it could be one or more of the symptoms that you see present. And the most reported symptom has been headache and cough as well as muscle aches. Those were the common symptoms that we heard people suffer from. And so 65% of our cases did have symptoms, but 35% did not report having any symptoms. And the symptoms, as you can see, did, did vary quite a bit. And this just gives you an idea of the racial breakdown of our cases. And I think what this tells you is that it mimics really the racial breakdown of our community in the sense. And you can tell that this is a good thing in the sense that no particular people were disproportionately impacted by COVID, at least in our community. I just want to remind people that we do have weekly COVID testing this week. It has been free for all Winchester students and I'm happy to say that on Saturday, we had close to 200 people turn out. And many of them, the majority of them were in fact students. So that's great news. So people were away or got together with people outside of their household over the past April break. Then it was very prudent that they test and I believe it was well attended today as well. We had another clinic and Thursday, we also have another clinic that will be free to all Winchester students as well. Anyone else would pay $20. So for example, it's open to people who work in our community. Any town employee, it is free as well, but we do collect $20 from anyone else. So I do encourage people who, even though you may have tested Saturday, but you did, let's say, you know, vacation in Aruba for the week. It would be wise to test again. If you're a student, staff member, please go and take advantage of that this Thursday. We've had testing, 10 testing events total, just, just to give you a little summary of our activity. 889 people have shown up to be tested and out of those we've had nine positive people. And again, this will continue as necessary. As well, and as at least through this fiscal year and hopefully beyond. Our vaccinate vaccination efforts locally were, were small, although we were prepared and certainly capable to do quite a bit more than we have done. But we remain hopeful that we will get a supply in the future. And we continue to vaccinate the homebound. We did hold small clinics at the Jenk Center and I thank them very much for their cooperation. They were a huge help to us in reaching out to the community to ensure that the targeted residents who are eligible knew about it and were able to register. And we will, as I said, we will continue our homebound program. So if anyone knows of any resident who was physically incapable of getting to a vaccination site, please call the Health Department. We are still continuing. We get new residents every week signing up for that. We are using the J and J vaccine for that. The pause has been lifted, as most of you know. So we are continuing to use that. If, if someone chooses not to, we hope to be able to make other arrangements and secure another brand for them. Right now, as everyone knows, as of April 19th, the vaccine is open to anyone 16 years of age and older. Obviously only Pfizer for those 16 to 18, but anyone can take advantage of any vaccination site that they can get an appointment at. And I do strongly encourage people to take advantage of that. So we can hopefully stay ahead of any of the permutations to this virus. We have three right now circulating in Massachusetts, as in other parts of our country. There are obviously others across the globe, but the ones that we are concerned with right now are, are three. And DPH estimates that 40% of our cases currently are actually variants of concern. And so the one that we are, you know, looking at closely, but really doesn't make up even 4% of our cases across the state is even 4% of our cases across the state is the P1, which originated in Brazil. That's the one where we have the least amount of data in terms of how our vaccines are working to protect us against P1. So we will stay tuned for more information on that. And I'll be sure to update the public regarding any information I get. We have been hearing about cases of breakthrough or people who have become ill or test positive with COVID, who have been fully vaccinated. It's not many, but the state is looking at that very carefully and will sequence those cases. This just gives you a snapshot of our residents who have been vaccinated. And it's a breakdown by age. Obviously, zero to 19 years of age, we'll see the least amount vaccinated, although it did jump by 1%. Last week, it was 1%, this week it's 2%. And so that's good news, but it'll start to creep up obviously even more. And if you look all the way to the right, those folks who are 65 and older, those are the people we really, I think, did a very good job at targeting in our initial vaccination effort. So the vaccination rates there are very high, which I'm happy to see. And so this will show you, the bar will show you the number of residents within each age grouping, as well as how many have been fully or partially vaccinated. I just want to let people know that we partnered with the Coalition. And really, this is Doc Butler's forum that she put together. She's been invaluable throughout the entire year-plus for COVID. Been such a huge help to the health department in getting the risk messaging out around COVID and helping itself by getting important forums and seminars held around COVID prevention. And this is another one. It's a vaccine Q and A and information with a nurse from Lahe, Winchester. So that will be coming up on May 13th. And you can register through the Coalition's email address there. And I'm sure it'll be tweeted and Facebooked and all that other good stuff. And I'm sure Dr. Evans will get that out there for people. And I encourage people who maybe are hesitant to get the vaccine to please tune in and ask any question about any of the vaccines that are available to people. Now, the new DESI protocols that were released last week and that took effect on Monday were interesting. But the goal is to get kids in school and keep them in school. And that is what we will do. And so we are changing how we quarantine or who we quarantine. Now, the definition of a close contact hasn't changed. That's still anybody within six feet of a positive COVID person. What has changed in who we quarantine, we're now only quarantining, meaning telling those people to stay at home who were within, or less, within three feet, sorry, of a positive person. So if someone, a student's desk is, or a student was less than three feet to a positive person, that close contact will be quarantined and told to stay at home and follow the quarantine protocol. Anyone who was three to six feet from a positive case does not have to now quarantine. They can continue to go to school. And in fact, they can continue to do all their normal activities as long as they're asymptomatic. And that's the key. As soon as someone develops symptoms, they need to stay at home and test. But for now, you know, we will now be able to keep more kids in the classroom that wouldn't, that would have to otherwise previously stay at home. And so that's a really big change. But I think, you know, it makes sense. And DESI certainly cites quite a few studies to suggest that, you know, the three to six distance is less risky. And if everybody's masked, and in these settings, this new protocol only pertains to in the classroom or on the bus. So in those settings, there are a lot of other mitigation measures going on. There's masking, there's disinfection going on. Our schools have, you know, good ventilation. So I feel like, you know, this could be a good thing, you know, to keep kids in school. Certainly, the kids are so excited as we heard to do that. And so we will work within these new protocols. For all other settings, you know, outside of the classroom and outside of the bus, this new protocol does not apply. So there are a lot of other details in there that we haven't quite fleshed out yet. But these are the, this is the major change in a nutshell. And I believe, yeah, that's all my slides.
Ms. Murphy, would you like to take questions now from the committee?
Sure.
Before we run into pool testing?
Sure.
And I open it up to questions from the committee. Mr. Nixon?
Hi, you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Murphy. Always appreciate the presentations, and they are richer and richer with detail. I was not able to watch the select board meeting, so I was riveted by all of this. I have a question for you about vaccinations over the long haul. I think the news of the week that kind of pertains to this is the major manufacturers. I think Moderna's already come out and said so. Pfizer said so five days ago, that these vaccinations, once you're fully vaccinated, gives you, there's a lot of effectiveness over six months. But everybody is widely appreciating the need for a booster sometime, you know, no more than a year from being fully vaccinated. And given that the population is kind of getting vaccinated at different times, given what groups they fall into, vaccination against COVID really kind of seems like a rolling effort over time. And of course, last night at town meeting, we heard from the Board of Health the interest in continuing to partner with the schools on our influenza vaccine program at our schools, which has always been super helpful. But there's some issues in getting vaccinations, one on top of the other, as well as just the bigger issue of timing and coordinating and understanding when boosters would be required and for whom. Is this something that you and the board are, I'm sure you're aware of it. Is it something you're sort of following? And is this something we might expect to get some further information and input from you on? As it pertains to what we feel we can do next year in the schools, our expectations for students, for visitors, I mean, certainly students over 16, teachers and staff, as it pertains to things like booster shots? And when and how? That's a mouthful.
No, but that's a very good question. It's one that we're asking as well. And I believe DPH told us recently that they were going to, you know, give us an update on that fairly soon. Although I think, you know, the data is sort of being, it's sort of still being distilled on that. So we will wait and see. But certainly, as you said, it's going to be a rolling effort, given all the different eligibility dates for everyone. So I would remain hopeful, because it's such a heavy lift for the medical provider community, even for the pharmacy retail community, to continue with this effort. I would be hopeful that at some point, we would be allowed to assist with this. Meaning, give us the vaccine, we will be able to go into the class, the school setting, and administer just as we would for the flu, right? In whatever timing that is required. So we would be able to do that, you know, very efficiently. We have access to everyone in Massachusetts. We have access to their vaccination records. So we'd be able to tell what the timing is. So, you know, the answer is, I don't have all of those details right now. But I will certainly come back and let you know when we do have further information.
So I appreciate that, knowing that the Board of Health, excuse me, and our health department, knowing that you have, you know, the interest, the ability and the wherewithal to even do that is just super helpful. And if that should come to pass, you know, I think even more people will really come to appreciate what an incredible asset you guys are to the town. I just think moving forward, this is something I think we're increasingly going to have to start thinking about. As I understood, the data reported just a few days ago, I think 57 or 58% of Winchester residents have received at least one shot, if not two. That number's going to climb pretty quickly. So very soon, we'll be thinking about that third shot, right? What's next and who gets it and when and how? And that's really, that could drive some interesting discussion for next year. So I'm glad you all are watching that carefully. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Thanks, Ms. Foney. First of all, I just wanted to thank the Department of Public Health for the testing clinics that they've been putting on. I also want to encourage anybody who is reluctant to have a younger child tested. I had a very reluctant younger child tested there at the clinic. And the staff was incredibly patient and kind and just so helpful in a way that doesn't happen as sort of the drive-through clinics that we've been at before. So I would encourage, it was quick, it was easy, people were patient and kind. You get in and out as quick as you're able to. So I'd encourage residents to continue to take advantage of that, particularly when they travel, so that we can continue to keep COVID out of our schools this spring too. So I just wanted to thank you for all your efforts in that and the child-friendliness of the staff too. So I have sort of, I'm going to ask my questions in backward order because I'm going to follow up on Mr. Nixon's question. We've noticed also in the news this week, Ms. Murphy, that many of the colleges in Massachusetts are starting to require vaccinations for their students going forward in the fall. And we saw this fall, the state of Massachusetts require flu vaccines for our students in schools as well. But then they sort of backed off on that. Do we expect, is there any talk in public health at the state level about requiring flu vaccine again next fall and concurrently COVID vaccine for those that are age-eligible?
Yeah, that's interesting, because I just learned about the Massachusetts Public University System requiring that. I learned about that today. So that's, yeah, it is interesting that they're doing that for students, for staff. I believe it's recommended. So I have not heard talk of making it mandatory for the public school system in Massachusetts. I haven't even heard discussion about that. Or so I don't know, I cannot answer that, although I'm sure it is being discussed on some level. I'm wondering if they're perhaps waiting for maybe the EUA to be lifted. I don't know. But I will certainly circle back on that. And I don't want to take credit for, Michelle, for the testing site. I want to give due credit to Jessica Pfefferman, who was basically the coordinator for that, as well as the pool of testing. And Jessica has some fabulous medical volunteers at our town hall site. So that's great to hear, and thank you, Jessica.
Thanks, Jessica. And then my second question is about, you had the chart up where 2% of our zero to 19-year-olds have been fully vaccinated and a number more have been partially vaccinated. How do you see vaccination playing into the quarantine requirements that we've received from DESI? Even if a student is fully vaccinated and within three feet, will they still be required to quarantine?
No, so fully vaccinated people do not, as long as, again, as long as there are no symptoms, they do not have to quarantine. They're exempt.
Okay, so that applies to students as well? Great, thank you.
Yes, exactly, yep. Thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Brady?
Thank you. I have a guest here. I just wanted to thank Jennifer and all the school nurses. My office in my building is right next to our school nurse. And I have seen all the amazing work that our nurses in Melrose have done. And I know you guys have done the same amazing work here in Winchester. And I just want to make sure everyone can appreciate the actual amount of additional work that the nurses have taken on and all the things that they've learned and had to do on the fly and adjust to constant changes and regulations and policies. And, I mean, my grandmother was a nurse, and so I already knew this, but nurses are just amazing. And I just wanted to give yet another real big thank you to all our school nurses for everything they've done this year.
Yes. Incredible partnership throughout the whole year. It's been, it's been, it's been amazing. And thank you, Jen Markham, for leading the way on that from the school side.
No, it's definitely been a team effort. It's been a lot, but working with this team has been fabulous, so thank you.
Mr. Hopcraft, did you have a question? I didn't hear that, but I'm going to assume that was a no. I think your volume might be down. But I do have a question, so I'll just jump in for the moment. I was very excited about the clinics, especially because we were returning as well. And I was just wondering, have you seen an increase in the number of participants in the clinics over the course of the 10 that you have run?
Sorry, so it's, when we initially held up the clinics for the first few, there was a strong demand. And then it sort of petered out for a few weeks. But this past April vacation, I believe, drove demand up again. And so, which is a good thing. But I think people, for a while, got a little bit comfortable. And you could also see that in our positivity rate start to increase a little bit. And I think with the vaccination efforts and really overall sort of COVID fatigue, people just didn't have very much interest, I suspect. But again, I do encourage people to continue with that as they, you know, if they travel or engage in other activities. So, which, which actually, I just want to touch on one thing. The governor did announce that masks are not required outdoors anymore after April 30th. And so it's discretionary. So if you still cannot maintain six feet from people, for example, if you're in the downtown area of Winchester and there are other people around you, please continue to wear your mask. I know people are awfully exhausted with this. But we have a whole segment of our population, our school community, are kids who are not vaccinated and won't be for a while. So you still need to be protective of others.
Thank you. And I'll just echo the comments from other members of the committee. Big thank you to all of you and to all the nurses. And then with respect to the clinic, my first time participating in Winchester was last Saturday. And it really, truly was so efficient. It was the first time that we had all done the nasal swab ourselves, but it was, and it was great. It was very straightforward. And then I would say the thing I was most impressed with was that the results came back so quickly, within five or six hours. So I was just, it was a really efficient experience. And I would highly recommend, and I definitely agree, I would encourage the community to keep participating in these testing clinics as much as possible. Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, just a clarification. On the news, the announcement from Governor Baker today, Ms. Murphy, my understanding is though that municipalities can still extend their restrictions. I think I just heard on WBUR an hour ago that Somerville is postponing the implementation, this change for, I think, three weeks. And I think the city of Boston is doing something similar. I think I heard that correctly. Is that, is that your understanding? And if so, do you expect some conversation at the Winchester level with the Board of Health about either embracing Governor Baker's announcement today or otherwise extending some protective measures in Winchester?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you for bringing that up. And that is, that is accurate, because we have our own declaration of public health emergency. And we have our own, we have issued our own emergency order for everyone to wear masks and including outdoors. That order locally still is in effect, even if the governor lifts it. So we will either have to rescind ours or keep it in place. And we'll have to do that in relative quick order, since, you know, we would, should think about either coinciding with the governor's, the governor's change or not. So yes, we will have to act fairly quickly to have a discussion and a decision about that. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just move us along to the next part of the discussion, which is a presentation from Ms. Pfefferman.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, so I'm going to share my screen as well. And while I'm doing that, I wanted to say I'm thrilled to hear that everyone has had such a good experience with the testing clinic. We definitely did our due diligence with vendors to get a good partner and make it as efficient and as affordable as possible. So thank you for taking advantage of it, and I hope people continue to. So we're going to continue to talk about testing, but a little bit of a different flavor. This is for the pool testing. And as way of background, I just wanted to give a little bit of information, especially for people who are new to the committee and may not have been involved in previous. and may not have been involved in previous discussions around pool testing. So before I even go into pool testing, which is a way to do testing, I want to talk about really what the objective of pool testing was, which is surveillance testing. And it's really to look for a prevalence or an increasing or decreasing of disease in a specific percentage or a specific part of a population. It can also help determine if interventions are being effective. So that's surveillance testing, and pool testing is a way to get at that. It's a strategy of testing, and it combines multiple test swabs into one pool group. It is then sent to the lab and is tested together. And the, this approach increases the number of swabs that can be tested together. So it's more time-efficient, and it also significantly brings down the cost of testing. Testing in general, regardless of how you're doing it, adds a layer of protection with helping to quickly identify any potential positive members in our community. So for the next slide, I just wanted to give a bit of an overview. D E S I, jumping ahead, D E S I offered funding to Massachusetts School Districts to implement pool testing into schools. As of early April, a little less than half of the districts were reported to be participating. Winchester decided to choose to start with a pilot at the high school. I think it was very wise not to move in all at once. Every school and every type of school would require a different type of implementation or way that you're collecting the test, time, place, level of involvement. Winchester also had the highest rate of tests at the time we were looking to do this. And it also has the most amount of movement throughout the day, so students are exposed to the most number of people, making it, making it a good choice for doing this type of surveillance testing. There was a time, there was a time-intensive planning period that took place that started in February 8th. There was lots of just logistics and different types of processes that needed to be determined. Sorry, my slides keep switching. One of the things that made this a little bit more complicated was that the vendor itself, that all of these vendors were new to pool testing in schools. So a lot of different procedures, processes, even technology that we were using were evolving as we were determining how we were going to implement this pilot. So the cost of the test supplies, the lab, the courier service, and we were able to get funding for an onsite testing coordinator who joined us March 16th, was all funded by the state. But there were personnel costs that were incurred, which were not. So just to go into what the structure looked like, the, the state did require that anyone being involved in this program had a program manager and different resources to help support the program. So again, I came in as that program manager. I can't say enough good things about Jen Markham, who is so meticulous and dedicated and was there early every morning to set up for this testing. She was our nurse lead. Dennis Mahoney was a great advocate for the program, really helping to spearhead communications out to the school and help us launch the program. We had onsite clinical support, which was often Jen, but sometimes the high school nurses. The onsite testing coordinator, who did all the, the day-to-day, making sure we had the supplies that were there and all the different pieces needed and all the resources. I did that initially, and then we brought on and trained someone from the state. We also had a ton of volunteers who were involved in this program, which was critical to the success. And I have to thank Mai Harrison and plenty of other people. We had Dot Butler and Mara Sullivan, who aren't even parents at the school, who were there each week, which was amazing. And they did, from start to finish, help with the check-in. They had to be trained on the system with observing, with all the different pieces. So I just, I give this as a way to understand why there were so many hours that were clocked on this program. So you can see below that there were more than 600 hours between all of us to get the program up and running and oversee it. So for the next slide, I just wanted to give a sense of how pool testing works in schools. First, first you would, the students would come in. We had cohort A that were testing on Tuesday, cohort B was testing on Thursday. We did staff that were also on Tuesday. And they would come in, they would swab, they would put it in the appropriate tube. They would, at the end, it would get sent off to the lab, and then it would come back. And we grouped the students in pools of 10, and we did staff in groups of three. When a pool result was negative, we knew that all the individuals in the pool were negative, and no further action was needed. If the pool came back positive, each member would have been required to get a follow-up test, which we would have had at the school. We did not have any positive pools throughout the program. This just gives a little visual, visual of the layout. We were able to use the gym, which was fabulous. We were able to space out. We did staff up appropriately with all the volunteers. We could have handled probably five times the volume or even 10 times the volume, I should say. Each time, we had different stations set up so people could walk, students could walk through. The girl with her thumbs up had actually won a gift card. We did prizes as well. We also created an entire website with all the information needed, where we posted the results. The link is there if anyone was interested to learn more about the program. And so the biggest question and most important question, how did it go? What was our participation? And during the seven-week pilot, we had 143 pools, which tested 805 individual swabs. We were definitely disappointed with the level of participation. With registration, we had about 26% of the high schools registered, but only about 9% attending weekly to get tested. We had a dedicated email address to send out messages. I'll talk on the next slide about some of the other things we did to try to increase participation. Teachers, we did have more that were signed up, but only about 11% that were coming to get tested. So in order for surveillance testing, really, to be surveillance testing and get a sense of what the prevalence in the population would be, we really would have needed more than 50% participation. What we did provide was a fast, easy, convenient way for asymptomatic people to get tested. But again, we don't have that data on prevalence or spread. All of the pools did end up being negative, which is great. Couple of reasons that could have been is based on selection bias. So perhaps the people who were coming to get tested were also the most cautious with their behavior around COVID. And it could have also been because people are following protocol and not coming to school when they're sick. Because again, this testing was for asymptomatic individuals. Just in terms of some of the things we did to try to increase participation, we had gift cards, we had giveaways for the first 10 to 20 people who were in, donated by parents. We tried to recruit, you can see some people, Evan, who you guys are familiar with, recruited here as a, as a little model. We had posters. We offered a webinar a few weeks into the program, which is what we were, we were encouraged to do. They say to, the state had said, wait till you get the program off the ground, and then you can invite people for any questions or concerns. We only had five people attend. Another big question we got, could it have been that because we were testing before school, it was limiting our participation? So what we did do was we took two full days to, to offer testing throughout the entire day, and we really had minimal participation. There's a slide in the appendix that will show the results from that day. But we really only had a handful additional students, and half of them had already come previously in the morning to get a test. So some key lessons learned, something we really knew ahead of time from listening to the state, state webinars about this, that it does require a lot of people power. We are so grateful for our dedicated volunteers. They were critical to the success. I think people who are interested in participating really knew it early on, and they signed up early on regardless of how much we continued to promote it. The time of day did not seem to have an impact on participation. We know that in order to reach people, and this is just in general, and I know schools deal with it all the time, you need to message from different, many different communication vehicles. One thing that we found where other schools were really successful was then when they required it for extracurricular activities. However, D E S I has, is no longer allowing or never was really a proponent of it being required. So those schools are not able to do it anymore. But schools that did require it had the best participation rates. And lastly, we didn't have a positive pool to learn lessons from. So before I move forward and to talk about next steps, just some assumptions about moving forward. So in order to continue doing this pilot, we would need the state to continue funding the cost of the test and the onsite coordinator, which they, they would be able to do. However, based on all of the work that the nurses now have, especially with full return, we would need to hire additional clinical, additional clinical resource to support the program. If we continued, I don't think we can have the expectation that we would have surveillance-level data. Because again, in a high school environment or in a school where there's lots of movement, you'd need more than 50% participation. We also have discussed that if we were to move forward, the focus would be on the students because of implementation logistics with the teachers. We were doing smaller pools, which required a little bit of a different process. And as we've talked about with the testing, weekly testing clinics, those are available for free for staff through the town. Also, in the appendix is a slide about the survey that was sent out. And the survey data, we surveyed all the schools to see whether people would participate or enroll their kids to participate in pool testing. We only had a 20% response rate for that. So it's a little bit hard to tell what that would actually mean. We know that 80% of the people didn't take the time to respond. So whether or not they would be interested in participating in pool testing is hard to tell. But either way, in looking at just the time left of the school year and the logistics involved, we would not at this time consider expanding to the elementary school because of the, the limited survey response. And also, there are five different elementary schools, which every school location requires an incremental time and cost. At the elementary schools, there's also more of the cohorts that are still in place versus in middle school and high school, things move around. So shortly is where I'm going to turn it over to you for discussion on what you would like to do moving forward, but just in terms of some options to help guide that discussion. We could discontinue pool testing in the Winchester district overall. You know, a cost or downside of that would be taking away something that we're already offering to the high school that was intended to minimize the spread of COVID. The benefit is that there would be no additional cost to that. We could continue testing at the Winchester High School. We would probably get another six weeks out of it if we started May 3rd. We need to revamp logistics a little bit and re-engage volunteers. There'd be a cost from the program management standpoint, as well as needing to hire someone from a clinical standpoint. The benefit is we've already done the hardest work, and we would help minimize the spread of COVID ideally. And lastly, we could, in addition to the high school or in place of the high school, expand to McCall. We would only probably get about five weeks out of it by the time you need to get things up and running. There would be another time-intensive planning period required. There'd be a higher cost from a program management standpoint. And then there would also be a cost for the clinical nurse. Again, the benefit of that is minimizing the spread of COVID. My next slide was really, I don't actually, there isn't, it's just the appendix there. So I, I guess I would open it up to questions now.
All right, Ms. Bergstrom, let me get everybody on the screen.
So Ms. Pefferman, before we start discussing these three options, I was wondering if there is a fourth option that you see as a viable option, which is to, is there a possibility to do more of the kind of testing that you've been offering at town hall, where particularly students or families that feel like they have, you know, high exposure or traveled or things like that can have the option of free testing?
So, and that's a great, that's a great question. I thought I had a next step slide in there. And the next step is we absolutely are going to be continuing through the end of the school year. I guess the question would become funding. So an individual PCR test at our clinic, we, we have a very good price for that. But we still are passing along $20 cost to people who use it unless they are, work for the town. So we would just need to determine how that would, how that would look.
How does the cost compare to the cost of continuing this program?
It's a little bit, well, it's a little bit comparing apples to oranges. I mean, it depends how many, I mean, the cost of the test is a lot less, but there's, there's definitely a cost involved in terms of implementing it. There's also, the other piece that I didn't mention, and a lot of thought and time went into how to implement this to be as least disruptive to teachers, staff, learning time. So, and there's also, there, again, I think, I feel like it's comparing apples to oranges a little bit.
Just a quick question, and this kind of touches on the town-side testing as well. So within, I guess, one of the draws, I think, for the recent testing in April vacation was that it was free, and maybe you were just saying that right now. So would that continue to be free for students? And, yeah.
Yeah, so as of now, it was just those three clinics that we waived the fee for them. I don't know if Jen Murphy would want to hop in here, but that's more of a, a town question.
No, that, that's accurate. We, the plan was to try to recoup as much of the cost as possible. That was sort of a discussion we had with VinCon and securing the money. You know, certainly, we could, it does incentivize testing in a way. I think we can all agree to that. But I, I don't know if it's feasible. It's a question I would, I would have to ask of others.
And, and testing typically, if you go anywhere else, I mean, the cheapest you can usually, can usually get out of pocket is like $60, all the way up to, I know people who are getting tests for close to $200. So a $20 fee is really reasonable. Again, we've structured it with volunteer clinical staff. We're using the town hall space. We're, we're trying to make it as affordable as possible.
Yes, it is definitely affordable, and it was so close and convenient.
Could I, could I jump in here, Karen? Because I think this is something that we had discussed with the health department, with the pool testing pilot team, and that we've been concerned about. So, so a couple of things. I think the timing of this expansion of, of pool testing is problematic from an administration point of view because it would be happening right at the same time we've reopened the high school and the middle school. So it's already, there's already a lot of chaos and change and uncertainty at the same time trying to manage this effort, which was a huge lift. You saw 600 hours. And so the, the, the cost for additional nurse support and program management support is only the tip of the iceberg. It would still require an immense effort from volunteers, from principals, from building nurses, et cetera. And, and so the question that comes before us is, what is the best way for us to quickly determine whether or not there is school spread and whether students or teachers are at risk? So at this point, most of the staff members are vaccinated or fully vaccinated. And so there's less concern about adults. But I still am very concerned, particularly as the governor reduces some of the mitigation efforts, that people are going to get complacent and relaxed, and then we're going to see another uptick in spread among our student population. So all along, the Department of Elementary and Secretary of Education has had available this rapid mobile testing unit that we've called on a couple of times when we have suspected school spread. But one of the things that Jen Murphy and Jen Markham and I had talked about was, perhaps we need to consider tapping into some of the COVID-related grant funding, either on the town side or the school side, to be more aggressive about bringing in our own mobile testing if we see cases within our classrooms. And I think that that, obviously, an effort like that, it takes time and coordination. A couple of times, we've done it at Parkhurst, and I've, you know, been the one kind of managing it a little bit through my office. But I think that probably would be a better, more efficient use of the resources that we have available, particularly in the last seven weeks of school. And, and I think would have a bigger payoff for us if we start to see cases of school spread or we see widespread cases within a school. I, I've tried very hard to communicate with the wider community about cases, and I've tried to be clear that, that we haven't identified any recent cases of school spread, that almost always we can identify the original source as within the family or a gathering of students at the high school level, a specific gathering. And we know, you know, kind of who is the original student who was ill and who, and who subsequently was infected as a result. So we haven't identified a funding source or a mechanism for bringing in the, the...
more testing directly to schools and making that available to students who might have been involved. But I think it's something that's certainly feasible, particularly with only seven or eight weeks of school left. So Jen Murphy, I don't know if you want to speak to that or add any thoughts about that at all?
I'm unmuted. No, no, I certainly agree with that targeted approach going forward. It, it sort of makes more sense based on what we've learned from the high school example and our, our safety net of having the community testing and the other options that you mentioned, Judy. I feel like we didn't have those safety nets, then, then it may be wise to, to try it and go forward with pool testing. But having those safety nets in place and other options for testing gives me a sense of, of a bit of comfort.
Mr. Brady?
I definitely wanted to agree with Dr. Evans' point. I, I think those solutions are definitely more valuable going forward. I had a conversation with my school nurse and her perspective pool testing. We had a lot more participants at my school and what it showed was there really wasn't much in terms of school spread, just like Dr. Evans said. So I think pool testing was important to do and it demonstrated what it needed to demonstrate. But at this point, I think it's very, very quickly diminishing returns with the pool testing.
Any further comments or questions from the committee? Ms. Bergstrom, if you could help me keep an eye out because I'm scrolling through screens.
So, so if Jess, if I could ask you to take your slides down for a second?
Oh.
No, thanks.
My apologies.
So I just wanted to, because I just want to make sure I can see everyone as well. And certainly we'll make, we've made the slide presentation available to the school committee and we could make it available to the wider school community as well, if people wanted more information about pool testing. What I would say is, this was more than 1,000% effort. It was incredibly well done. It was professional, it was efficient, it was very well thought out. And I can't say enough about the team at the high school and, and public health for pulling this together. But I, it would be helpful to have consensus from the committee before I announce to the community that we're not going to continue the pool testing initiative, but that we are going to seek to expand opportunities for more direct testing if we are concerned about either positivity rates within the school or school spread. And I just want to make sure that, you know, the committee members, if anyone has any reservations about that recommendation from me, that you can speak up about this. I see, I see Mr. Nixon's setup, so.
Well, I, I had a thought about this. I'm generally supportive of it, but what I'm, what I'm wrestling with in my mind is now that in Massachusetts, students as young as 16 are now eligible for the vaccine. And, and that the more students that get vaccinated, obviously, the less likelihood there will be of school-based spread. I'm generally in support of what you're describing, Dr. Evans. But I'm actually wondering if there's a way we can turn the teenage eligibility into some sort of an effort, just like at some of our schools, we have motivational fundraising drives with goals and targets that are set. And when I saw a slide with my Harrison's name on it, there's nothing that woman can't do with all of her energy. I, I'm really wondering if it makes sense for us to think about some sort of, almost a public service campaign that encourages our eligible teenagers to get vaccinated. And, you know, certainly an individual's situation is private information, but since we're working in partnership with the Board of Health and they do have access to vaccination data, there might be some way to really encourage our students to get vaccinated and to somehow announce that and celebrate that, maybe either a number of students, a percentage target or something. You know, students might be more inclined to do it when they realize their peers are doing it. And I wonder what others kind of think about that as a strategy, but that's what's next to me is, is just more shots in arms, particularly seeing how our pool testing turned up, no positives.
Any thoughts from the, Ms. Bergstrom?
And I guess if I wasn't clear before, I guess I am also in favor of moving forward as Dr. Evans and Jen Markham has suggested. I guess, Dr. Evans and Markham, the only thing I guess I ever do request is maybe moving forward, if there's some sort of plan that we could see about what a reactive plan would look like. I know we have another meeting in a couple of weeks. You know, so that the community is also clear that if we're, that we're not so much as abandoning pooled testing as changing strategies as vaccination and the case rates are changing in the community, that we're also shifting our plan to meet as we have for the last year, change as we see change happening. So if we could see a little bit more about what that rapid mobile testing would look like, if the, there's any way we can use the binex testing that we also have available to us, just, I guess, a clearer plan of what the reactive plan would be. And so, community members know how they can get their children tested very quickly as well, too, because I did, as Ms. Bollone has mentioned, so appreciate the quick accessibility to testing in town. But I think there could be a comfort level to some parents to know that if there was quick rapid testing available that was free to them, if there was a case in their child's classroom, that might bring a comfort level that even pooled testing wouldn't.
I think it's an excellent suggestion, so I'll, I'll meet with the team and see what we can come up with that's more specific than what I've shared thus far.
And Mr. Hopcroft?
Tom, we still can't hear you.
Okay. In the meantime, I will also lend my support towards Dr. Evans' plan or suggestion with the, around the rapid mobile testing.
Thank you.
And I believe Mr. Hopcroft said he was logging on from another computer, so we can just give him a minute.
Sure. And while we're waiting for him to come, if I could just share a caution. There was a phone call with the Commissioner of Education and Superintendent today. He shared some additional information about return to school. But one thing he said that resonated with me was, please continue to reiterate the importance of the mitigation efforts that we're using in schools. And I think that it's important for parents to know, particularly grade six through 12 parents, as all students are returning tomorrow, that we are going to be very stringently continuing to enforce three feet or more of distance, six feet or more when students are unmasked. And, and really keeping in place all of the procedures that we've had around hand washing and checking symptoms and making sure you don't come to school when ill and so forth. That we're not letting down our guard just because the wider community has been vaccinated to a greater degree in the adult population. Our children are still at risk, children still become ill, some students become very ill and could spread that to family members or friends. And so we're going to do our part in the schools. I have had some pushback from some community members because of restrictions we have on athletic events or senior gatherings, et cetera. And I just want to be sure that the message that is being sent to parents and that's supported, I hope, by Public Health and School Committee is that we are working very hard to keep everybody well and keep our schools open. And that we all need to continue to be patient and do our part to make sure that that happens. So I see Mr. Hopcroft. I'm hoping we'll be able to hear him if he has another question or comment.
Oh, no.
You might, you might want to call in on a phone, Tom?
Yeah.
There's a phone number.
Oh, wait. We can.
There is, I think Ms. Bergstrom indicated she might be able to hear you, but you know what? We'll go with Mr. Nixon's question first.
So I, I just, I wanted to second everything Dr. Evans just said. And then I have a, I have a question and then a request from Ms. Murphy. If I understood it, it would be at the next Board of Health meeting when you will just next discuss the local declaration of emergency. Is that right? And if so, when is that meeting? And I would ask, I think, to help us convey the very message Dr. Evans just shared. If the Board of Health should opt to fall in line with Governor Baker's announcement today and on his timeline, some supplemental language about being thoughtful, taking care, making good decisions would be helpful. And certainly, if the Board of Health decides to extend our protections a little bit, it would be helpful for some clarity about the why. And whatever it is that your board might decide, I think it would be very helpful if that could be communicated to families through school messenger, just so that the, the message we're getting from you and your board and from Dr. Evans is coordinated and consistent.
So the, just to be clear, the declaration will still be in existence, just like the governor's issuance of the Public Health Emergency Declaration is still in existence regardless of any of his orders he may rescind. So the Public Health Emergency is still there. What we would be looking at in our next Board of Health meeting is next Wednesday at 5:00. We will have to put on the agenda the mask mandate order. And that would be, again, whether or not we want to fall in line with what the governor is now doing. In other words, just rescind what we have in place and allow for the governor's orders to stand and we abide by those and his guidance and enforce that. Or we keep in place what we have, which would mean masks would be worn outside at all times as is required now, as of today. So that will be next Wednesday, May 5th.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Hopcroft? I was going to say, it might be a good idea to call in.
He is called, oh, is he?
617.
Hold on.
You can see it, it's a 617.
Yeah.
Here he is.
There you go.
Just have to unmute that one.
Yep.
Got it.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yay.
Gotta love technology. I do have the, the, thank you for the suggestions. I do have the microphone selected, but it's still not working, so I'll have to figure that out. Anyway, I was, I mean, I probably backed a few issues now, but I was going to be supportive of, I think Michelle summarized it well, but coupling communication of the alternative strategy along with rolling back on the pool of testing, I think it's really important to put those two things together. And, and I liked Chris's or Mr. Nixon's suggestion around some sort of incentive for the vaccinations. That was it for now. Thank you. And I don't have a good background here.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? I would, otherwise I would suggest that we move on to grade 6 through 12, that is, it is now 723.
Can I just ask, Dr. Evans, was that enough of a consensus for you to?
Yes, that was excellent. Thank you. That was, that was very helpful. I know this is an issue that's important to our community and I just wanted to be sure that we had consensus about it. We could probably let our friends from Public Health and Jen Murphy go and eat their dinner, because they haven't had dinner yet. So thank you very much for coming. I appreciate that.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much. So the, I've just put this on as a placeholder because we haven't actually all fully come back yet together. Later in the meeting, I'm going to ask you to support with a vote our plan for full return for 6 through 12. What you heard from Evan tonight, I think, was very helpful in that as we're transitioning students back, that we are being very planful about our efforts to support students, especially those who have not yet been in school, who have returned from full remote choices. And no one has been in, in the presence of all of their teachers, even if they were hybrid students. The teachers have not yet met some of those students because all of the students had some remote classes as well. So it's, it's a very big shift. I have shared with you the details sent to me from the middle school principal and the high school principal about this. I'll report back on it at the next meeting. But I mainly wanted to give you a chance to ask questions. And if I don't know the answers, I'll, I'll find out and get back to you and check in with the principals. We are all very excited to have the students who've chosen to come back full and in person in our McCall Middle School and at the high school tomorrow, full and in person. And I think it's important to remember that Jason Levine is here and he's been working very closely with the social emotional learning coach slash counselors at the elementary level, school psychologists, administrators, to be sure that the transition, which was even more complicated in some ways at the elementary level as students had to return to some, to different schools, to different classes. Classes were broken up in some cases. And I think that the elementary folks did a great job with that. And I know likewise, supportive efforts are, are and have been in place at middle and high school. But I didn't know if Jason wanted to hit any highlights of that. And then I'd be happy to take any questions from members rather than going through the logistics of the return if you have specific questions. So Jason, is there anything you wanted to highlight about how we're supporting social emotional learning needs of students?
Sure. So, you know, we have both direct and indirect support set up. You know, our elementary, our, our social emotional coaches and our, and our psychologists are, have been consulting to make sure that they are checking in with all of, with all of the classrooms, as well as our students that are still remote. Our, and making sure to check in individually with our most vulnerable students that, that each of them are working with. Our middle and high school counselors are just now to be having, having students return and making sure that they're checking in with the students on their caseloads, on, on the students with their caseloads and doing more and more intensive support with students that are struggling when they, when they return. In-class lessons, you know, giving more support towards redeveloping community and reinforcing our supportive relationships. And also with students that we have returning from hospitalizations, making sure that there's a focus on that student's transition plan back and continued support in their return. And then the sort of indirect pieces, you know, we've been doing a lot of mental health-focused PD. The, our counselors just recently have done some consultation with advocates. Our emergency service provider, as well as interface on the referral process, giving them feedback as to how to, how to move referrals along with, to help support students. But, you know, I think that certainly comes along with the fact that they're unfortunately across the state and really across the country, there are really long waits for mental health treatment. But that's, and then we also have been working with all of our community partners to provide social service support, parent and student workshops, and summer growth opportunities for our students as they come back. Sorry, that was a mouthful.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Thanks, Mr. Levine. It was really great to hear all the social emotional support that we're providing students as they return. I know Mr. Lin at the middle school was also providing unique orientations for the full remote students that are coming back now. Are those kinds of opportunities planned through your department for full remote students that have not yet returned for the fall?
I'm sorry, I am not understanding the end of, the end of the question.
We still have a number, a significant number of full remote students that did not yet return. Are those kinds of opportunities that are being offered now with the full return to school going to be offered again sometime this summer or before return for all those outstanding full remote students?
Yeah, I mean, it would certainly look, look slightly different. Obviously, those tours and things like that not happening in the midst of a, of a school day and such. But yes, there would certain, there will certainly be opportunities to transition all students that are just returning to a building.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the committee on 6 through 12th grade return? Seeing none. Then, thank you very much, Mr. Levine, for your update. And we will move on into the next topic of business, which is the FY22 budget update. And I guess I would just comment that last night, the school committee had met prior to town meeting to discuss the FY22 budget. We talked about the variance with the finance committee's yellow sheet to town meeting. And we were in agreement that going forward with all the uncertainties around COVID that we have faced this year and that we continue to grapple with, that we plan to keep our budget as we had voted back in January going forward. And Dr. Evans, did you have any comment?
Sure, just briefly. One of the most challenging things about projecting staffing levels for the fall, especially at the K5 level, is getting a good handle on how many students will be sitting in our chairs. And with continued uncertainty about the availability of vaccines for students, particularly aged 12 to 18, and, and some families still having questions about the safety of our schools that may not be answered by the end of the school year. I'm still hearing from some parents who aren't decided about whether they'll continue to homeschool or will be seeking some kind of a remote school option, or will return in full to our classrooms. But for the most part, we've been seeing lots and lots of students returning, particularly at the K5 level. I got an updated enrollment number today from our registrar. I usually get it on May 1st, and I said, well, it's close enough to May 1st, let me have it. And since how many students have enrolled in K5 schools since the beginning of April? And knowing that there was a full week vacation in there, I thought it would be a handful, and it was a couple of dozen students who returned or moved in in April. And so I'm in the process of updating the projected enrollments at each grade level for next year. And what I'll be providing before Monday to the school committee is an updated enrollment projection based on known students who are either pre-registered, have registered with us, or are currently in our classrooms and are expected to move up to the next grade level at the same school next year. What I'm noticing from my update is even the last projection that I gave you in March, we have more students either sitting in the seats or registered at some grade levels at some schools than I had shared with you in March. And so while there are still some areas of uncertainty, and there always are, particularly with kindergarten and first grade registration, how many more additional students will we have? I'm going to be meeting tomorrow with the Lincoln principal, because at several grade levels, it looks like she's, she's added more students or expects more students in the fall who are pre-registered than we've provided classroom space for. So we're continuing to look at those numbers. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to manage with 111 sections, but I've asked for in the budget 113, and it is likely we will need to have 113 sections. That explains the difference between what the finance committee voted and what the school committee voted for the budget. There's a reduction of two positions in the finance committee's recommendation, and the school committee feels that it's likely we'll need those two additional positions, and particularly with all the uncertainty that we'd like to keep them in the budget. There are really only a couple of options if we have a greater number of students registered in our classrooms. We can add additional sections and break up classes that we've put together for the fall and hire additional staff. Or we can have some comfort level with larger class sizes. The school committee target, we try to keep 18 to 20 in grades K1, and then 20 to 24 in the other grade levels thereabouts. The averages that I showed you already have some grade levels pushing up against that max on average at a school in the projections. And one question that continues to face us is, will we be required to stay at three feet distance? Or will we be able to have very full classrooms of 23, 24? We've had classrooms as high as 25 or 26 in the district. Some of our classrooms can accommodate more students than others. Some are quite small, and even at 22 would be hard pressed to have enough space for everyone. And so I would rather be sure that we have enough staffing to have enough sections to keep class size as reasonable, particularly in a pandemic where Ms. Burke points out, a significant number of students will have been away from school for more than a full year and learning fully remotely, and will need to transition back. And so we've now had kind of several different first days of school. We'll have another one tomorrow. It's always exciting, but it's also anxiety provoking. I know there'll be high school and middle school students tonight and teachers who will be not getting much sleep, excited and nervous and wanting to be sure we're following all the rules to keep everybody safe. And so my recommendation for the school committee is to stay the course, stay at the budgeted amount that you recommended, which is what you decided to do yesterday at town meeting on Monday. The recommended budget will not include those two additional teachers. And so sometimes that happens, where there's a difference between the finance committee and the school committee and town meeting ultimately gets to vote for the budget that they think is most appropriate and reasonable. So I have provided the budget summary for you in your packet, in case you had any questions for me or for Ellen Whitemore. But I think at this point, the next discussion will be when I, when I share the projections with you, and those confirm, will confirm that, if anything, we've underestimated at 111 that I told you we'd need in March.
Any comments from the school committee members? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, and we will proceed into the action items. Beginning. Pardon me?
Fee discussion?
Did I just, oh, you know what? Very sorry, I jumped ahead on my schedule. So yes, next item of business is a report and update on our fees. So beginning with preschool and pre-K fees.
So actually, pages 32 and 33 in the packet were reversed. So if we could look at page 33 first, this page provides a summary of all the fees that the district currently charges families, as well as the amount listed for each fee. And these are current, the current rates for FY21. Transportation fees, these are the fees should school have run the full 180 days. This is the same rate that was approved by the school committee for FY20. In the fall of FY21, if you recall, there was one modification made. We went, we eliminated the option of having two students. So last year, we had one student, two student option, as well as a family. And that was eliminated at the recommendation of a school committee member this past fall, which has created a great deal of ease in my office, so we appreciate that. So the, we do still have the additional fee for transportation to after-school programming of $90 per transportation for each family, for each individual student or round trip per family. Athletic fees, again, these are the same fees that were in place for FY20 and FY21, $350 per sport with a family cap of $1,400. And then for preschool tuition, the FY21 fee for the afternoon session is $4,150. The morning session for four and five-year-olds is $4,450. The morning session for three and four-year-olds is $4,850, and the full day is $9,300. So at our next meeting, we would be looking to have you vote for the fees for FY22. At this time, I'm not recommending a fee increase for transportation or athletics. Preschool is, it will be the next item that we did take care of. Transportation costs will be discussed when I do the overview for you of the transportation bid results for FY22. So for the preschool recommendations for next year, currently, we run both half-day and full-day integrated preschool programs for three, four, and five-year-olds. The program is designed to meet the needs of students with identified disabilities and includes typically developing peers in the inclusion classrooms. As we prepare for FY22, we have evaluated enrollment, staffing, as well as the needs of our students. Pam Gerard and Sarah Casey have been invaluable through this whole process, especially the amount of data that Sarah Casey has maintained. She has been the special ed supervisor of the preschool program for 15 years. So she brought a great deal of knowledge and guidance to us when we have the conversations. Based upon her recommendations for, for next year, she has recommended that we eliminate the morning session for the four and five-year-olds, as well as the afternoon session that we offer. Her reasoning behind this is that we typically have a much larger and robust demand for full-day programming. We typically have a very difficult time filling both the morning session for four and five-year-olds, as well as the afternoon session. In many cases, the afternoon session is the last one to be filled, as parents are really looking for, you know, for the longest possible stretch of the day to have their child in preschool. So by eliminating these two half-day programs, we'd be able to create one full-day pre-K classroom and then offer those full-day spots to families who have been really looking for and advocating for these, for these additional slots. Based upon the evaluation of other area preschools, as well as bearing in mind that we are a public school system and that our programming is an inclusion classroom, in which we really are working to meet the needs of the students with identified disabilities, as well as their typically developing peers. The proposed rates for the integrated preschool for FY22 would just increase by $300 for the half, excuse me, $300 for the full-day program and $150 for the half-day preschool program. These increases are consistent with what we've done in past years and does keep us in line with being able to meet what we've budgeted for, for the salaries of the staff, for the teachers, as well as the ESPs that are paid for out of tuition. So at the next meeting, I would be looking for you to, to vote to approve the preschool tuition rates for FY22.
Mr. Brady, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Ellen, I appreciated all the detail you offered us, it was really helpful. I was wondering if you'd be able just to illuminate for us, when we're charging these fees for transportation, it's my understanding that that's not the full cost. And so is there a way you can kind of explain to us what the subsidy is? Because I, I just think it's important for folks to understand that this is a subsidy, and even though we're charging a fee, we're not charging the full fee, and we could in some cases. So I think it's just important for folks to know
Certainly.
the subsidy they're getting. So that was my first question.
So certainly, could I have screen share permissions, Dr. Evans, so I can share a screen?
If Dolanase can, can give you permission.
Okay.
I think I had shared, given up.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is actually the slide that I had prepared to review the FY22 bid results with, with the committee. So if you'll notice here, this has, with the proposed rates would be for FY22 for AM, PM regular transportation. What's the individual cost per day for the PM, that's the three additional buses that we run in the afternoon, as well as our transportation that per day costs for providing the Minuteman vocational transportation to the students who go to school out in Lexington. So the total estimated contract cost for next year would be $731,808. The estimated bus pass revenue that I'm anticipating taking in next year would be $350,000, leaving us with the budget request for FY22 of $390,539. That does put us under budget by $8,731.10. But it's still, this illustrates that even with the bus revenue and the bus pass revenue that we do take in, there is still a significant, you know, responsibility on the district for the trans, for the cost of transportation.
Thank you, that's really helpful. So just roughly, we could say that we're basically paying, give or take 50%.
Yes.
So the subsidy is 50%, and we're asking the parents to pay 50%. So that's, that's fairly generous, I would say.
Great. Any objections to me, stop, stopping to share?
No, that, that's great. And then just my other question was just
Sure.
on the preschool, could you give us a sense of how many of our families are paying that tuition? Just out of the total number of students?
That varies year to year and classroom to classroom. So on any given year, we do see a variable with that. Over, in the course of the last three years, I have seen in a significant uptick in the, in the number of families who, who are, do qualify for free and reduced. So, you know, we do have to take that into consideration, which is why Sarah Casey and I monitor the, the enrollment, you know, on a monthly, on a month-to-month basis, and in some cases, as we get really into the school year, we're looking at that weekly to make sure that we have all of our obligations accounted for.
Right. Maybe Pam could speak to how many in a typical preschool classroom are students with disabilities? And how many typical peers there are with the ratio? And how many students altogether in a typical preschool classroom? We're having trouble hearing you, Pam.
So muted.
So thanks for the, yeah, sorry.
You and, you and Tom are afflicted with the same issue, I think. Maybe it's, oh, there you are, I think I heard you there.
Tom, you're in good company, can you?
Yes.
Seamus, typically the class is an eight to seven ratio, eight typical peers, seven students with different learning profiles.
Okay, that, that's really helpful, and then I, we don't need to figure it all out now, but I'd just be curious, Ellen, just to see over time, what
Yep.
the numbers have looked like in terms of, you know, how
So.
the free and reduced lunch population increasing, and, because I just think that all kind of is, is helpful information around these fees.
Sure, so if you'd like to have an offline conversation with me, maybe we can schedule some time to do a Zoom or have a phone conversation to talk further about what the fees over the past few years have looked like.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Are there any additional questions about? Are there any additional questions about any of the fee proposals that I've reviewed?
We have two, beginning with Ms. Bergstrom.
Okay.
I actually have a quick question from Ms. Gerard. When we're talking about eliminating the half day program at preschool, do we ever have students with disabilities who might require a half day program? And would that still be available to them even if we went to a complete full day program?
Absolutely, absolutely. We think this is really going to help our, our enrollment for typical peers who opt not to go for the half day.
But, but that's, it's not like when we eliminated half day kindergarten and we just didn't have the program anymore. If some, if a student needs that, we can still offer that to them.
Correct.
If their IEP requires it.
Correct.
Right, great.
I think one other thing that's important to note is we have a lot of students who get services who are not enrolled necessarily in our preschool program. Students ages, you know, three all the way up, who are Winchester students who get services but are not necessarily enrolled in the program as well. So students who just need speech or just need, you know, OT or PT or something else could just get or, or support students with autism spectrum disorder who just need that support. They may not be enrolled in our district, but they may get additional support. Right, Pam?
Correct.
Yeah. Important for parents to know that whatever the child needs, if that student is a resident in Winchester, we provide free and appropriate education. Yeah.
Right. And then my other is just a kind of a statement question to Ms. Whitmore. Our fee structure for everything in the district is subsidized by the district, not just transportation. Isn't that correct? So no fee that a parent pays in this district completely covers any of the services we offer. Our budget always sort of supports that, that fee. It's only a partial payment.
Correct. The preschool tuition only covers a very small percentage of the full costs for preschool. We've, we've looked at that when you start factoring in the additional staffing, the additional ESPs that are, that are in the classroom, the additional specialists that are, that service the, the entire classroom in addition to the students who are on individual learning plans. So we do, you know, definitely with that and also with athletics. We definitely know that athletic fees do not cover the full cost of a sport.
Thank you.
Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. So I, I guess I just want to offer two, two pieces of color following up on Mr. Brady's question about enrollment at the preschool that it certainly varies year to year, varies grade level to grade level. It even varies throughout the year. I mean, I think our practice, am I right, Ms. Gerard? Is we try to hold some spots open at the beginning of the year. So we see an uptick. I, I like the idea of offering this additional full day because it seems to me for our youngest learners, for whom there may be legitimate developmental delay, there may not be enough data to be able to really pin it down. And sometimes what's really helpful is to have that child in an environment for an extended period of time. Right? Where our teachers and specialists can see more, discuss more with their peers. It, it, it seems to me from a layman's point of view that offering this extra full day might in fact help us better recognize and identify developmental delay when it's there. Am I off base on that, Ms. Gerard?
No, not at all, Chris. What the feedback and, and this has been, for as long as I've been in the district now is that the parents have requested they would prefer to have this full day option rather than the half day. The mornings are a more popular time. Afternoons are typically a nap time or a quieter time. And consequently, we have more difficulty filling some of the spots. So we, based on the feedback that Sarah has, has, and the data that Sarah has collected over the years with the parents' request, this is something that they have said that they would, they would prefer to have as an option. And we would support it, that we think this is a very, very, very good way to go. The comment about fluctuating, it goes up and down constantly through the year. We do try to save a seat, so to say, should we need that. But we also will put in a waiver into the state if we need to, if the class sizes exceed something. And if we have, if we have more of a need, we'll certainly go back to, to Judy and the superintendent and, and talk about kind of what the needs are and what the direction goes. The, the programming always follows the needs of the students in front of us. So it's, it's always, that's, gets back to Judy's comment about the enrollment. It, you know, when we start thinking budget and it's Halloween and that's kind of like, oh, we have a good idea of what we think might happen, looks entirely different four or five months later.
Sure. So I have, I thank you for that. I, my last question is a very weedy one. It's all about space. This extra full day section, is this going to be Parkhurst based or VO based? Or do we know yet?
I believe it will be Parkhurst.
It will be Parkhurst based.
Okay. Thank you. Apologize if you already said that. Thank you.
Mr. Brady?
I just wanted to share a few other thoughts that I've been thinking around fees. And these are just more for the committee maybe to mull over. You know, when you think about our fees for athletics, if we're charging $300, you know, we're charging $300 to families who $300 is a significant commitment. And then we're, we're charging that same $300 to a family that $300 is, they don't even notice it, to be frank. So I think we just, we want to think about things like that going forward that, you know, our, our fees end up being pretty regressive. And obviously that, that may be unavoidable, but I think it's just something worth considering. Having worked in schools with enough families who are just kind of getting by and aren't going to qualify for free and reduced lunch and aren't going to qualify for any subsidy. And to be frank, as I've heard it from the parents, they're, they're not going to ask for help even though they might need it. And we're, we're putting them in, at times, a very uncomfortable position. And I just think that's worth considering. Cause I've, again, I've talked to enough of those families. I've known those students who have told me that, yeah, I'm not going to do sports because I can't afford it. And, you know, even in reaching out to their parent, their parent's going to tell me, no, we just didn't want them to do it. We just didn't want her to do it. And, and so it can bring us into some, some difficult situations. And obviously it's not, it's not the majority of cases at all. But I, I just want us to be thoughtful about our fees as we set them and wondering, you know, what, what kind of flexibility we can have, what we can offer when people sign up. You know, I, I always love when you sign your kid up for a, a camp or another program and there's an option to give more and to sponsor somebody, you know? And I just wonder, so I'm not saying we're going to start leveling out the fees by all different kinds of income levels. But maybe, you know, would it be worth thinking about something like that? Where we'd be able to support people and, you know, potentially reduce the overall fees? And then this is a whole can of worms, but I'll open it because I, I think it's worth considering. You know, we're, we're charging students to do something that I, I view as, you know, a former athlete myself, really, really important in terms of everything. In terms of the learning process, we're, we're charging them for that. And then we don't charge students to park at the high school. And plenty of high schools do charge students to park at the high school. And, you know, that, that's a way that you can charge a fee for something that maybe you do or don't want to encourage. So again, this is all just kind of food for thought, nothing that I think we should be doing this meeting or next meeting, but just more long-term. Those are some of the thoughts I've been thinking about in terms of fees. And I have heard from a number of parents that just, you know, 20 years ago, when they went to high school, wherever they went, they were paying to park and they were quite surprised. Again, these are parents of younger students that we, we don't require any pay for our parking, you know, at, at the high school. So just some thoughts there.
So Ms. Bolognese, if I may respond? So in terms of charging for parking, for parking fees, typically parking fees, the way things are structured with DESI and school finance rules, those fees would actually go to the town to be used or would only, could only be used for maintenance of the parking lots. So unfortunately, that typically is, is really not, doesn't really truly benefit the district in terms of providing an additional revenue stream for us. Certainly it, it can be used to maintain parking lots, for pavement, for, for striping the lines. But typically that's how, how that is handled. And then as far as students who are unable to pay the fees, but they don't qualify for free and reduced or, or, you know, issues, I know a lot of times often, Mr. Mahoney, as well as Mr. Aria, do have a relationship with a student and are aware of situations and they work something out internally with the students. Dr. Ellen Emma has a phenomenal relationship with ANCA. And ANCA has truly been an amazing community partner and has provided us with, with the means to provide scholarships and financial assistance for, for fees, for programming, for, for music, for, for summer enrichment, for really for everything. So those opportunities are available and Dr. Ellen Emma manages them all very quietly and discreetly under the radar.
No, that, that's really great to know. And I, I just think it, as much as we obviously want to manage those under the radar, I just want to make sure that the community knows that those options are available and we are doing that. Cause I think that, that's really important. And just on the parking piece, I, I have read a few articles about schools in Massachusetts that are using those funds in other ways. But you and I, we can, when we have our chat, I can, you know, chat with you more about that.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
Any other questions for this fee discussion? Mr. Hopcroft, I wasn't sure if you had raised your hand. Okay, just checking. Mr. Nixon.
Sure. So just an observation I want to share on the, the heels of what Mr. Brady was discussing. Since I started paying attention to it, our athletics, our family athletics fee has gone up 45%. I don't know that that was the first year I was on school committee. I might've actually noticed it before I got on school committee. But I remember at one point it was 960 bucks. That sharp increase and other fees have increased. And every time the school committee has voted those increases, we've done so with some degree of chest pain. It, we are, it's a good maybe moment to remind those watching, we're a district that not only struggles year over year with enrollment growth. Thankfully, the enrollment growth we've had in more recent years is not as sharp as it was once upon a time. But there is a legacy that we struggle with for what was truly explosive enrollment growth where we, in some years, we didn't really get the basic things we needed. We had to kind of catch up and claw back. So when you, this is why our per pupil spending is below the state average, right? It's not that we're not successful fighting for budgets. It's that our enrollment just grows and grows and grows. So to the, I think it was Ms. Bergstrom's point about how really almost everything, to one degree or another, is subsidized in the district. And that's a good point. School committees of the past have approached this subject with some trepidation. No one likes the prospect of raising a fee. And it was last, I think, part of our community conversation around the operating override, right? And we made it very clear with, if the operating override didn't pass, we'd be forced to raise fees. That's one of the reasons why we've been able to avoid that. But as we heard at town meeting last night, that operating override isn't going to last much longer either. One way or another, we got to cover our expenses. In the past, we have also looked, Mr. Brady, with a critical eye at not just the revenue side, but the expense side. As you can imagine, some sports are much more expensive than others. And that may be something for us to, to look at and be mindful of moving forward as well. So I, I just want to throw that, it's a good observation you make. Certainly it's on my radar. It's no fun to talk about it. But we should be. Thanks.
Any further items? Then, okay. Then with that, seeing as it is 8:04, we will move on into the action items again. So, and we will begin with a vote to approve the memorandum of agreements, the MOAs for units B, which are the administrative assistants, C, the ESPs, and D are sped, are supervisors. And Lori Kirby, our director of personnel, will be discussing these MOAs.
Good evening, everyone. So we have the three units here and there are no significant changes from the start of the school year. And these very much reflect the changes that were made to the unit A, the teacher's MOA. And the two areas were the quarantine and they align better with what we know and how we should quarantine and just allowing the testing to continue. And we had a lengthy conversation on that this evening as well. So those are the two highlights and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on the MOAs? If not, I would welcome a motion.
I move that we approve the MOAs for units B, C, and D as presented.
Second.
Yes, roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Hi.
Mr. Brady?
Hi.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. And we will next move into approval of a gift.
B is vote to authorize the superintendent, Ms. Bolognese.
Boy, I need to, as I'm scrolling down my pages in the packet.
Okay. I've got your back.
Thank you very much. So next item of business is voting to authorize superintendent's implementation of the return to school plan for grades six through 12.
So just to speak very briefly to this, I had submitted to the school committee and presented and outlined at a previous meeting, the return to school plan from the middle school and high school principals. This is just a vote to support this effort and to allow us to make any small modifications that we need to make after the students have returned before the next school committee meeting. And so this is just a general vote of support for a full return for six through 12 in our implementation plan.
I'm happy to make a motion to authorize Dr. Evans to implement the return to school plan for grades six through 12 as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom? Ms. Bergstrom, you muted yourself, but I believe that was a yay.
It was. I did, I hit the mute too fast.
That happens. Mr. Brady?
Hi.
The chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Next item of business is the approval of the gift. Dr. Ellen Emma, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. So as many of you know, we have been working on K to 12 and actually at our curriculum subcommittee tomorrow, we'll be chatting about like diversifying our texts. So we've been using, you know, the concept of how do we continue to provide both windows and mirrors for our students? And how do we continue to celebrate differences and unique and find commonalities at the same time? So one of our parents in the district graciously wanted to support a great book. It's called Just Ask, Be Different, Be Brave, Be You. And some of our second grade teachers were already using it. And some of our second grade teachers were already using it. And so they are purchasing those books once approved by you. So that every second grade classroom in the district, not just, you know, in their homeschool, will be able to have this in their classrooms. So we're very appreciative and love to just keep expanding our diverse texts.
Any comments or questions?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the gift of the books as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thank you to the parent.
Yes.
Thank you. I did invite her, but she didn't feel the need to attend.
Well, we thank her from here anyway. Hopefully she hears this.
And I will send an email. Thank you.
We appreciate the gift. Next item of business is, let's see, the vote of to a vote on the regular student transportation contract for FY twenty two to twenty four.
This is page fifty one of your packet. To give some background on the process of how we procure school transportation. We put the a bid package out once every three years for regular yellow bus transportation. Historically, there have been very few respondents to the invitation for bids. Six years ago, there were two bidders with North Suburban being the selected vendor as they were the lowest responsible bidder. When I did this three years ago, and I believe Ms. Bergstrom was the school committee liaison that worked with me on this. There was only one respondent, and it was North Suburban. North Suburban has a very long history of providing yellow bus transportation services to the families of Winchester. And then with the bid opening that I completed on March twenty fourth, again, there was only one bidder responded. There was a robust number of companies that did contact us looking for copies of the bid packet. But unfortunately, we only did receive the one response from North Suburban. And North Suburban was determined to be the lowest responsible bidder for both transportation as well as athletics. I've reviewed the bid proposals, and there does not appear to be any procedural concerns with the bid. I also met with John Devine, the owner of North Suburban Transportation, and we were able to negotiate prices lower than the bid amount. And Mr. Devine and North Suburban Transportation have been excellent partners over the years to us and to the families of Winchester. So the bottom of page fifty one provides you with what our current rates are, as well as what the negotiated prices are for years one, two, and three. I'm recommending that school committee vote to approve the award of the contract for regular school bus transportation to North Suburban. And that I work with the town manager's office to execute a contract with North Suburban for transportation services for fiscals twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four. Does anybody have any questions? The rates are extremely favorable. I had originally budgeted five percent for transportation, and this came in well under that.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Just a quick question, Ms. Whitmore. We had talked about using van transportation perhaps sometime in the future as well for student athletic transportation. And nothing that we're doing here prohibits us from doing that.
So that the athletic contract is actually what we're going to talk about next on the agenda. So this is entirely, we treat yellow bus transportation and athletic transportation are two separate separate contracts.
Okay. Just getting ahead of myself.
You are, but believe me, that's on my list of things to talk about.
Mr. Brady.
Unless there are other questions, I just wanted to motion to vote to approve the contract and just thank Ellen for her great work on getting a great rate and doing a great negotiation.
We still had a question from Mr. Nixon, I believe.
Thank you. So if I saw it correctly in the packet. We're looking at that extra cost for the afternoon only bus run. I think it's ninety dollars if I was reading that correctly. So I just want to point out to the committee, I mean, that's pretty close to covering the actual delta that we've always paid. So this is particularly for our two newer members. The the cost of a bus, what we call a regular day yellow bus, includes both a morning and an afternoon run. So if you took the current value of that at three sixty nine and you split it, it's one eighty four and a half a buck. However, that's not what the cost of the afternoon runs are. The afternoon runs are almost two hundred and sixty bucks. So we pay a bit of a premium for the afternoon runs. And this is why, and we actually started this about Ms. Whitmore, what, three, four, four, five, something like that. Some years ago, we wanted to, we wanted to be sure that we weren't providing a greater subsidy to steal a term that has come up a couple of times tonight. We didn't want to pass on a greater subsidy to families who, for instance, need to send their kids to the programs at the Mystic School. So what we're doing is the cost for those afternoon bus runs, it's higher because that's a reflection that our costs are higher. So what I was just noting is that delta then in the rates that Ms. Whitmore is proposing, that delta is going up from seventy five bucks to eighty four. We're very close to that at that ninety dollar surcharge, which I support. A question then, just before there's a motion from Mr. Brady. In some years, we run eight buses and some years we run nine. It all depends on ridership. And as we all remember, we've heard some anxiety from families of kids at Kids Corner. And even maybe some at Rec about the prospect of busing to Mystic. So it seems as though from these numbers, we're comfortable in approving these such that if we had, if we have to add the ninth bus. We have some extra money in that fund, not a lot, I mean, four figures. But are you comfortable if we add that nine ninth bus, we can find a way to make that work?
I'm anticipating that we'll have, continue to have reserves in that account as we've been able to maintain, you know, at the end of the year, year to year. So I'm anticipating that we will have reserves that would be able to support that should we need to do that.
And I appreciate that. And have we communicated as much then to the both directors at the program over there, the one upstairs? You know, I know was interested in a town RFP that went out that might have included after school busing as well.
So the town RFP did include after school busing. I have had conversations with Ms. White, who had worked with with Mr. Caprari on the on the bid package. I've also had conversations with both the upstairs and downstairs programs. And indicated that that our budget did include funding for the after school buses over to Mystic. Knowing that we have, will have the reserves for, you know, if we need to go with from the eighth to the ninth bus, that we would be able to do so. Once school committee votes tonight and things are pretty much definite on the transportation plan for next year, with the bid being awarded to North Suburban. My plan for tomorrow morning would be to reach out to North Suburban and then to Rec and then to Kids Corner to let them know that everything is in good shape for next year.
I think the timing of that would be really huge because I know registration is opening for those programs, and that's a big question mark for them. My last comment is just some share an observation and a hope on my part that we won't need that ninth bus next year. Because coronavirus has just forced so many of our kids out and about, whether they're walking or they're on bikes. And we've got more independent kids in Winchester than we've ever had before. So hopefully, we're going to have more walkers and filling more bus racks, Dr. Evans, next year. Thank you.
Mr. Brady, did you have a question or are you raising your hand for the motion?
No, sorry, my hand stayed up for the motion. I'd like to move the motion that we vote to support the contracts as they've been laid out and negotiated.
Second. I have one for regular bus transportation.
Roll call. Yes, for the regular bus transportation, FY twenty two through twenty four. So a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
The chair votes aye. The vote is again unanimous. And next item of business is approval of minutes. And we have
Athletic transportation.
Athletic transportation.
Gosh. Okay, so next vote is for athletic transportation for FY twenty two.
Okay, so this is on page fifty two of your packet. Again, from a historical piece, athletic transportation up until the bid that was done six years ago. Athletic transportation was bundled with yellow bus transportation as another option on the on the bid list. That was the bid package that was sent out over six years ago, due to the very rising increases in the cost of athletic transportation. It, the decision had been made to take it out and have it as a separate contract. North Suburban has been providing the transportation for athletics. Again, six years ago, they carved it out. Three years ago, when I did the contract and said the bid packages out, we had one respondent in our suburban. And this year, it was the same, one respondent North Suburban. Unlike the yellow bus contract, I had only done this for one year as right before we encountered COVID last year. Mr. Aria and I were working on securing, procuring mini buses to have to do a lease for to have a couple of mini buses for athletics to use for the transportation of smaller teams. And therefore, it was going to, in the long run, save us transportation costs for athletics. Mr. Aria and I have spoken at length in the past couple of months, and this is something that we do want to revisit next year. Once we have the opportunity to see what ridership for transportation looks like and to see what the transportation needs are for for athletics. So it's easier for us to go into a one year contract, evaluate our needs, procure mini buses next year, and then do a second or do another request for bids next year in which it would be, you know, a smaller bid value. So I'm looking for the school committee to authorize me to work with the town manager's office to execute a contract with North Suburban to provide athletic transportation for fiscal twenty two only.
So moved if there are no questions.
And I'll second.
Very much. A roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Hi.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we will move to the last voting item, which is the approval of minutes. And I believe we have the April sixth and the April thirteenth minutes available. And I would welcome any comments around these.
If there are none, I'm happy to move that we approve the April sixth and April thirteenth minutes as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon.
Hi.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Hi.
Bergstrom.
Hi.
Mr. Brady.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Vote is unanimous. And I'm just going to check just before I move on. Okay, yes, so next item of business is the chair report. And I have nothing particularly new to add on this, except to wish our students and our staff, our administrators and our families a very smooth transition back to in person learning at the middle school and at the high school. And I'd also just like to offer our continued support of all elementary families and students and teachers and remote students as we navigate these last eight weeks of school. And to everyone in our community, I would just ask that we please stay safe and mindful of each other and diligent to protect everybody in our community. And just a couple other notes. I have been reviewing the FY twenty one, twenty two subcommittees, and I will speak with each of you individually. And we will review this draft at our next meeting. And also, I guess with the summer coming up in rapidly. At this point of the year, we usually ask for school committee members just to please let me know your plans around vacation time, because we will try to set up our summer meeting schedule just to coordinate with everybody on that. And thank you very much. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Sure, I have, there's a lot going on in the district right now, but not so much that I can share. We are paying close attention to all of the revised guidelines from the state regarding mitigation measures and moving into the next phase of reopening. At this point, I don't think it's going to have any impact on any of our end of the year celebrations. But certainly, the principals are continuing to consult with other local principals and with each other to be sure that all students, both full remote and in person students, have an appropriate end of the school year and have some closure after what has been an extraordinary year by all accounts. The EFPDC is meeting tomorrow night to keep the process rolling on the Lynch School, where close to selecting an owner's project manager. I want to thank especially Meg White from the town engineer's office, who's really a project manager for so many things that have happened in the town. And she's done an extraordinary job again, helping us to advertise and set up interviews for owner's project manager for the Lynch Project, where we continue to move forward. We have a fairly tight deadline to do a submission to the MSBA, and we'll be discussing that at the EFPDC tomorrow night. I'd also ask for the indulgence of the wider community as we're in the midst of town meeting. We had extensive meeting last night. We have two more likely very late nights with town meeting next week. As we wrestle with a number of foreign articles, some of which are related to schools and certainly our budget. And we'll continue to engage the wider community in any plans that we make for full return next fall. We're still awaiting additional guidance, but what the commissioner has put out as late as today is that he expects all schools to fully reopen in person next fall, and that's what we're planning for and budgeting for. And the behind the scenes action is pretty intense around placement, course selection, hiring, et cetera. And we're really looking forward to hiring some of the new positions like the nurse for Parkhurst, the social emotional support that's in the budget, the dean of students, et cetera. And we'll provide some updates on that. I want to congratulate Jen Ellen Emma and Ellen and the other folks who supported recent hiring of the two technology positions. You remember, we approved job descriptions for what used to be our network manager and our administrator. And then a director of digital teaching and learning, sort of two different positions that work closely together. Those hires have been successful. And I know that the process was pretty intensive and involved a lot of people. And so congratulations, particularly to Jen Ellen for her leadership in that regard. So we will be recognizing teachers or staff members who are retiring at the end of this year. There are some, not as many as one might expect, but there are a few, and we'll be acknowledging them towards the end of the year. And so I'm hopeful that we will iron out the times and the dates for the last three or four school committee meetings that we're planning before the school year ends on June eighteenth tonight, so that we can have more certainty about time and and dates. So that's all I have for superintendent's report.
Mr. Nixon.
Yeah, I had a, I have a request for Dr. Evans. The school committee typically talks about open enrollment for the next school year in May. And given what a wonky year this has been, and our discussion much earlier tonight around our budget for FY twenty two. And and, um, our concern for enrollment, it's especially hard, I would think, to have a high degree of confidence where that extra space will be. I wanted to ask if you would find, if you, if you, if you wouldn't find it inappropriate, Dr. Evans, to put some thought towards whether open enrollment is something worth us considering later this spring for next school year, and if so, you know, where and, and how much? That may be an impossible task right now, and if that's the case, that's okay. But since our practice is to, is to discuss and make decisions on open enrollment, I think typically in May, um, just so families would have the opportunity, I think that might be, and I'm segueing here, that could be a future agenda item, even if the right, even if your recommendation is we just don't do anything for next year due to the unpredictability. You may have thoughts on that now, I don't know, uh, but that's something I want to be sure we don't lose sight of.
Right. Some years that we've, I have recommended no, um, open enrollment seats. Typically, um, I put out the, um, we identify a certain number of seats at each school, at each grade level, and then I put out the application, we process the applications, we have returns. There may be a dozen or so student applications returned. Maybe about half of those come to fruition. A lot of the families, just when it comes to making that final determination, they do not do it. Particularly if there aren't spots for both siblings or three siblings, depending on how many students are in a school. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of work and effort in the, in the, in the number of students we can persuade to move to other schools to even enrollment across the district is actually extraordinarily few in a typical year. So i- if I were to give you my recommendation today, I would say, based on the numbers that I looked at today, I would not recommend opening any open enrollment seats. However, I have had a larger than usual number of parents request to stay in their current schools, even though they've moved within town. And I have granted all of those, because in a time of uncertainty, if it's going to make a student and a family feel better to stay at the school where they're currently, um, learning, we, we try to make every effort to do that. And so I'm really trying to be extremely lenient in that if one of the students are, um, able to be transported by parents, who don't have a bus going to another area of town for pickup, um, particularly in the mornings. So, um, so my inclination is to not open any seats, but I'll take one last look when I do my final enrollment projections.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure. Karen, you muted.
Thank you. And now we turn to future agenda items, some of which we have listed are the PAC chair update, which I believe we are looking at for May eighteenth. Capital projects update and a building projects update. Mr. Brady?
I'd just like to add as a future agenda item, I, I think it was brought up, you know, in terms of the preschool that parents were looking for the option that gave more time and more coverage. So in the long term, and I know Senator Lewis has proposed some legislation around pre-K and preschool and, you know, I'd, I'd really love to have us have a discussion about what that might look like in Winchester. Just having spoken with some folks, I know, I know there's some interest both on the parent's side and to some extent on the staff's side, um, for folks who might be interested in being a part of that program. So I'd love to have that as a future agenda item, just potentially expanding our preschool program.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I, I, a couple of other thoughts just to pile onto that. Uh, I, I like that suggestion from Mr. Brady and, um, I only caught a moment of it in the news today. I, 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 I think from the White House, there's some announcement either today or coming tomorrow about universal pre-K initiatives. I don't know what that means in terms of expectations and funding. And of course, in Winchester, it's not just the money, it's the space. If there's information more available about that, maybe that could be included in the discussion, just to understand, you know, either what's coming or what's supported at the federal level. And that might be a welcome opportunity as well for us to just share more broadly, Mr. Brady, what the master plan's aspirations are for expanded pre-K and how that would come into play at Lynch. So we could talk about it, I think, at multiple levels. It's a good idea.
Ms. Bergstrom?
I was just gonna add that may, that may be a discussion that we would like, we might want to invite Senator Lewis to participate in, so it may be a, a, uh, well, future agenda item, because, um, he would know what is going on most closely at the state level. He or someone from his office may be able to come speak to that, because whatever plans we make may want to be coordinated with the state's efforts.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree. We would want to invite Senator Lewis at some point. I, I just think it would be good for us to start to have the conversation, because it's, it's gonna take many, many, many conversations to make, you know, forward progress on it.
We were well versed with that with full day K, so we will just start all over again.
Other future agenda items? I have, uh, a second reading of policy IHBEA. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we'll move to future, next meeting dates. And one, so our future meeting dates at this point are May fourth and May eighteenth and June first. And.
Could I, Karen, could I make a couple of suggestions around future meeting dates?
Yes, you may.
So, um, the, um, it's always a little awkward when we have new members join us and we've already published the meeting dates for the whole year, and they may not always align with everyone's schedule. We also, uh, sometimes have a second June meeting. Um, sometimes we don't. It seems prudent this year to try to hold one, June fifteenth. I've cleared the evening of June fifteenth, if that's convenient for, for members to have a second June meeting. Might be a good meeting if we could bring the new superintendent, um, to have some transition time if he's available. But, uh, since school is getting out on the eighteenth and I'll be leaving shortly thereafter, it might be a good time to have some closure in case there's anything that we, I need to wrap up and be sure that, um, uh, Frank Hackett is, um, made aware of. I understand that there are different conflicts for different members on May fourth. Both, it wa- it was originally scheduled as a nine-thirty AM meeting and then, um, looking, we've tried diligently to several other times. And for various reasons, everybody's schedule is busy and a lot of people have conflicts. I know, um, Jen Allen Emma was hoping to bring, um, some teachers to speak about performance assessments, one of our two major district goals, as a kind of a culminating report. Um, and so we want to be sure, we need some clarity on when that meeting is going to be and at what time. One thing that I would boldly suggest is that we might perhaps not have a meeting on May fourth. It's one week from today. We have two lengthy meetings, Monday and Thursday of that week at least for town meeting, and if the pace town meeting is going, it may be additionally another long meeting the following week. And, uh, the chair and the, the vice chair and I have worked already on the May fourth agenda. There isn't anything that I see that can't be put off till the eighteenth. Might mean a long meeting on the eighteenth. But, um, my recommendation would be to eliminate the meeting on the fourth, have our next meeting on the eighteenth, and then meet again on June first and June fifteenth. And make those all evening meetings that start at six P M. It's my recommendation, so. But this is totally the com- a committee decision, just my, my thoughts.
I, I, I for one really appreciate Judy's recommendation. I, I think that's really prudent with the volume of meetings and just that they're hopefully, knock on wood, right now, there's nothing dire that we need to meet on May fourth about. I don't mean to be a stick in the mud, but of, of course, Tuesday, the fifteenth, all the elementary schools in Melrose are different days, and, and my school has our moving up ceremony that evening, but it's six to seven, so I'm, I'm happy to, you know, I think I could probably miss public comment that night and then just join as soon as, um, our ceremony is, is over. I can run upstairs to my office and join from there. So I, I think that would, that would definitely work for me.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, um, and, and not to further throw a wrench into everybody's planning as the summer's about to open up. And we'll talk about this more under our building and capital projects update. We've gotten a little bit of a delayed start on the central office relocation project, the space programming exercise, although that is, that is just now out of the box. Our original schedule was to have a report back to the school committee by the first week of June and to allow time for kind of sort of to di- digest that and maybe even some decision-making if, and I don't want to prejudge it, if there's any sort of request we, we might want to make of capital, we would have time to do that by a meeting in mid-June. That's not likely to happen now. Uh, the team is asking for a little more time. So it's a long way of saying we, we may need to have a meeting actually in the fourth week of June. And we do this from time to time. We have an agenda that's just on one thing. The nice thing about it is that meetings tend not to take too long. We also, just to remind our two new members, we, we also have traditionally looked at Thursdays on the calendar as an alternative when, when, when we have difficulty on Tuesdays. And, and that's for all of us. Um, that's always kind of a second place to look. So I just want to throw that out there. We, I may be looking, I may be suggesting we find time either on June twenty-second or June twenty-fourth. Just want to say it's a possibility. That was the message I heard from the team this morning. And again, we'll, we'll know more when we get, we have some time. But I want to make everybody aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. Any further comments on scheduling?
And. Just, just a quick one, Ms. Bollinaze, do we need a placeholder meeting before town meeting next week? Or on either day of town meeting next week? Do we want to schedule meetings just in case? As we did this time? Because if we don't schedule them, we can't, um, we can't meet. So if, as long as we.
We could have the placeholder meeting and then have it posted, and then if we deem that it is not necessary, then we can.
Correct.
Decide not to, not to meet.
Correct.
On that note, I just want to say I am ninety-nine, not a hundred, I'm ninety-nine percent sure, Mr. Brady and I have a, uh, precinct one meeting prior to town meeting. Um, I don't know if he got those emails. I think that that's on Monday. So I could certainly go back and double check that. I saw those flying around today.
Yeah, it's Monday at six forty-five.
Mon- thank you, Monday, six forty-five. So I just want to be sure if we do schedule a meeting beforehand, let's find a time where Mr. Brady and I can jump into that and take care of precinct business.
I think it was six this time, Mr. Nixon. Right, we did a six o'clock, so. I don't anticipate anything we'd need about to take longer than forty-five minutes.
Right.
If we.
That sounds fair. I, I, I appreciate Mr. Brady chiming in. I couldn't remember what the timing was of that.
Okay, so we will look at a placeholder meeting likely around six o'clock for at least the Monday prior to town meeting.
Okay. I'll take care of posting that, sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Do you like a motion to adjourn?
I would welcome that.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call vote, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a great evening. I'll point out it is eight forty-four.